We're live.
Down here today at the Cobal Skill Public Meeting for the Public Hearing. And we're gonna go ahead and get inside here and check out this public meeting. You guys ready for a good public meeting? I did bring Rebecca boxes so that she can take her stuff home. Can you get it up a sec? So we did bring Rebecca a box for her stuff. Looks like the meeting's gonna be in here. Check out the public meeting in here. Well, yeah, front and center, of course. I bought Rebecca a card. Is there a sign up here for public speaking or anything?
Well, there's a sign up for a public hearing, yeah.
For the speaking? All right, sign us into that public hearing, guys. Are any of these seats taken? I see the chairs down, those ones are up. Like, certain people sit here? Set up right here, front and center, baby. You guys watching from here at our public, public meeting, we got a nice good signal here. How's the picture looking at home? The word is she's already in the building. She's already here. So she goes home. You can see our board members up here. They asked you Rebecca t-shirts now, they're asking for. Got the Chief of Police here, the Village Clerk.
That's all right. I trust you, so can you trust the guy? You didn't throw that one to the ground like mine? That's nice of you. Nice gentleman.
Ten more minutes, guys. Bet you guys are hitting that thumbs up in here. Thank you, guys, for all the super chats, by the way. Hey, Chief, is this about a normal size of a meeting, or is this more people than normal? A little bit more today? Or is this about normal?
Uh, well, I think that in order to pass this resolution, they're gonna have to drink that, because it's a pretty stupid resolution. You gotta be drunk if you think it's gonna stand some muster, so. But no, this is for Rebecca's stuff.
Damn, fifty dollars, super chat. This guy from Florida, thanks for that fifty bucks. Go to my, my life in combat, because he thinks she can't come.
Does anyone else need a chair?
Another phone, then another phone, then another phone, then another phone. Just keep hearing, keep hearing. It's like the mirror effect. Only five dollars, alright. Thanks for that five dollar super chat, guys. Gas money's already paid for. Meeting is gonna start.
Closer, you ready? Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please take through the pledge. Thank you all for coming this evening. I would like to ask you to please silence your devices as not to disrupt the meeting. And you've noted the fire exits, that's the door that you came in, in the rear, and the door to my left, your right. At this time, I would like to ask for a moment of silence, if you would, for past Fire Department Captain George Ray, as well as Elizabeth Betsy Burke. Thank you for that. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty first, twenty twenty five? First by Lance, second by Howard, all in favor? Opposed? So carry it. We're going to go into the public hearings because we have a very full agenda this evening. We are limiting your time at the podium for each public hearing that you choose to speak on to a total of three minutes. So moving into the public hearing pertaining to Local Law Three of twenty twenty five revisions to Code one sixty dash ten signs. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the subject? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I would like to make a motion to leave it open an opening month.
There's a first and a second discussion? All in favor? So, I'm sorry, could we get a roll call, Cindy? I didn't...
Oh, we don't need a roll call on that.
To, to tape, um, so we're keeping that open?
So, yeah, Ruth, Ruth is the first.
Alright.
Second, and...
Thank you. Open until your next meeting. And can I have... Okay, so now we are moving on to the second public hearing, which is Local Law Number Four of twenty twenty five revisions to Chapter one forty eight, six, and that was the no parking any time. So we've had lots of input on this, which was great. I did sit and speak with the Superintendent of Schools, that would be CRCS, along with the Transportation Director, as well as Consultant Cancelo Waste, the garbage company, fire, rescue, and codes. So we do have some recommendations. And so what we have ultimately changed is the title to Street Parking Regulations, indicating the streets, and, oh, and I'm sorry, I forgot to include the, the police in that as well with their, their input. So I don't know that you guys want me to go through and read each one. I'll do it if you like, otherwise it will be reposted on the website and available in the Village Clerk's office for review.
You mean that some streets will be coming off the list, or the list will be revised, or...
The list is revised with further recommendations, so for example, Canterbury Drive, allowing parking on both sides. So.
Okay, are you gonna have input from what we...
That, that is going to, that is gonna be a public hearing that is going to stay open until the next board meeting. If you guys are not opposed to that, I'm assuming we absolutely have to. So if you want a copy of that, you can get it at the Village Office, or it'll be online, or we can email it to you, the revisions. Do you want a motion, Cindy, to hold that open?
Motion to hold the public hearing open.
That is a first by Ruth, second by Mike, all in favor? Opposed? So carry it. At this time, can I have a motion to open the public hearing on the tentative twenty twenty six budgets? First by Mike, second by Lance, all in favor? Opposed? So carry it. So the first one we're going to do is the twenty twenty six general fund. And this is where you have comments. Please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from, and what your comments are if they relate to the general fund budget. Do you want us to open and close each one?
You don't have to do them separately.
Okay.
Yeah, but if anybody wants to speak to any of the...
Sure. So, so what we'll do is there are four budgets in total. That's water, sewer, joint, joint activity, and general fund. I will say there is not a change in dollar figure, but a change in purpose for Chief Riggy on fire on his Capitol Outlay. We were waiting on estimates for the door locks and security system. They came back far pricier than what we stuck in there for in a earmark. So we intend to utilize the monies that we allotted, which was twenty thousand, for what was the number that we plugged in. And so we're going to utilize that for the necessary door locks, for the three door locks on the outside doors, and a portable fan. But aside from that, no dollar figure changes.
Nancy Van Dusen, Palm Street Public Skill. I'm curious on the pool budget, the joint budget, why there were no pool chemicals prior to nineteen, to twenty twenty four? And also no electric, gas, water, sewer before.
So we moved that from the, it's technically part of the A Fund, but we moved it to joint so we could recognize exactly what the pool costs are. What it costs to have the pool as far as all that's associated with that.
And did I understand correctly that fifteen thousand dollars was requested for building repair, but only five thousand dollars was put in the budget? What behind...
What, which building?
It's for the pool. For the pool?
You requested amount, it, it's possible, because sometimes when department heads request things, that items will actually fall into different categories, or may fall under capital improvements. So that is possible. Building repairs, you can tell, is the pump filters, so.
And several places throughout the budget, it refers to the salary worksheet. Where is that located?
It's available at the office.
Oh, but it's not, it's not online?
No, I can't possibly post all those worksheets online, but they're available to anybody who wants to look at them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I would make a motion to close the public hearing on the budget. Second by Mike, all in favor? Opposed? So carry it. I make a motion that we pass the proposed twenty twenty six budget. Second by Howard, all in favor? Opposed?
We do a roll call for all of them in one?
Sure. Go ahead.
Roll call for approval of the general A Fund budget, joint activity, J Fund budget, water fund, F Fund budget, sewer fund, G Fund budget. Mike Lynn?
Yes.
Ruth Van Dusen?
Yes.
Yes.
Lance Rotolo?
Yes.
Howard Burr?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, can I have a motion to open the public hearing pertaining to local, proposed Local Law Number 5 of 2025? First by Lance. Also, okay, second by Mike, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. Attorney Storm, do you want to preface this by any chance for the listening public?
Certainly, if we're relating to, so generally speaking, this is the local law regarding the executive order.
Correct.
So there's some concern about potential filming in non-public areas within City Hall that was brought to my attention. I reviewed an executive order that was issued by the mayor of the city of Schenectady prohibiting certain recordings and filming that was going on for purposes of a YouTube channel called Auditing Schenectady. The executive order issued by the mayor was challenged in Supreme Court in the county of Schenectady, and Supreme Court upheld that executive order, meaning it found that there was no violation of the First Amendment. That went to the appellate division, the appellate division confirmed that decision.
Never went to appeals.
I'm speaking to the board.
Lies.
That is based on my legal review and my education as an attorney. I provided that decision to the board for their review, and I think that this local law was drafted to mirror the executive order that was issued by the mayor in Schenectady that was upheld. And a copy of that decision and order in the county of Schenectady Supreme Court Index Number 2024, 1431, is on NISIF, which is available to the public, and has been provided to the court.
Thank you. So that public hearing is now open. If you wish to address the board, please come to the podium, state your name, and comments, we have three minutes of due.
First, I'd like to express my dissent on Local Law 5 of 2025, prohibited activities in non-public forum areas, and have my dissent reported in the minutes of the meeting.
Becky, how you doing today? Sorry about the election, didn't hear what you wanted to do. We got a box for you to take home with you, take your stuff out. I'm gonna just figure out this proposed resolution. It's pretty stupid because I believe there's a cancerous mindset spreading through government where you believe you're entitled to protection, you're a protected class. This entitlement where because you won an election, because you won a popularity contest, the public doesn't have the right to come see you. It's been open in your board meetings where you've spoken, you've said, you know, if you're not here to pay your taxes, if you're not here to pay your water bill, why are you here? You know, give me money or fuck off. And it's pretty sad to see a public servant, the first word is public, you're here to serve them for another month or so before the new mayor takes over.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, thank you. But that's why we're here to fight this. And when you put up these signs that say no recording, it becomes a challenge to us. It becomes a way to show you that you can put words on a piece of paper, it didn't stop us from coming in and recording, and it won't stop us from coming again. You can proclaim whatever you want under this fake authority that you got winning a popularity contest, but really we just find it comical. We find it jokingly embarrassing. And it's, it becomes a challenge where we now have to show you that you're here to serve the public. You're not here to figure out what you want to do with your life. You're not here to get a little stipend to pay your bills. You're here to serve the people in this room. And when we see stuff like this, it kind of makes us disappointed. Then we look into, you know, Colbiskill, and you want to talk about private records behind the screen. It's on you to create privacy. I'm an accounting firm, right? I have a lobby, and when I want to meet with clients, I take them into a back room. That's where all the personnel files are, that's where all the data is. You can create privacy, it's possible to do it. I believe in you guys and your ability to create privacy, to keep private data from public eyes. But when I look into Colbiskill, I see that, you know, you can't afford the police overtime. Well, probably because it was being stolen under your watch. When you were here as a trustee, you had employees stealing from you. You have a dust-up at a charity event for a dog show. You can't contain yourself, you can't contain yourself on camera, you make yourself look like a fool. And I just want to end with a quick saying that if you go out throughout your day, you run into a couple assholes, you had a bad day. But throughout your day, if everyone you interact with is an asshole, you might be the asshole.
We need you to refrain from the profanity, and you're addressing the entire board, not an individual, please.
Well, I'm addressing the entire board. You guys should vote no on this because it's quite frankly embarrassing, and the public deserves that. So that's my time, thank you so much.
My name is Ann Erie County, my residency is Erie County, and I come to speak at the public hearing about how ridiculous this tyrannical thinking way of is, like the mayor of Schenectady can make rights just disappear. Everybody knows it's wrong, but they'll get some corrupt judge to agree with it. And luckily in this case, our mayor would definitely would have agreed with it, isn't longer gonna be the mayor. I'm glad she's moving on to the private sector to be just a measly peasant like the rest of us, Rebecca, back to the private sector, no special privileges, no executive orders, no BS. And welcome back to the private sector, I just wanted to say that. And as far as the rest of you on this board, if you can get a corrupt judge to agree with something, you know, maybe you could, but just think slavery was legal at one time when some corrupt people thought that that was a great idea. But, you know, the right thing's the right thing, and I'm glad Ruth on the board here already shows disdain for knowing that it's wrong and honoring her oath to the Constitution. So I'd like to give props to Ruth for standing up and speaking about it right off the bat. Mayor Rebecca, I brought you a box down there that says Rebecca's Stuff, that's for you to pack your shit and get the heck out of public service. You don't belong there. You seem to hate the public, and you're one nasty lady, and I couldn't be happier to see you have to leave this office and knowing that the new mayor is gonna shut this executive order, this law, and shut down because he believes in the Constitution. So enjoy the private sector, and I got that box here like I promised when I came. You know, all you had to do was be nice, you could have, you know, been nice on camera, but instead you want to be nasty. You guys want to try these executive orders and BS? Yeah, we'll challenge them. And your attorney, if anybody would have appealed that, it would have been me. And I know, I didn't, I didn't pull out the funds to do it. So it definitely wasn't appealed, I like to see that you gave the case law, but you left out the case law that you're, of the appeal that you did your research on that you were lying about, so. So the rest of yous on the board, I know where the new mayor stands on this executive order, where before it ever even go to a vote, Rebecca won't have her say in it anymore, and I'm proud of that. So the rest of the board, you guys better honor your oath and vote that thing down if it ever comes to fruition.
I'm Cynthia Norr, I'm the clerk treasurer for the village of Colbiskill. And I want everybody in this room, and all the people who are going to see this livestream, and all the people who are gonna watch the YouTube video, to understand the intent of what people are doing and what is really truly happening and what is involved here. I've written this, and I need to read it to you. Employees deserve to come to work without the fear that they will be filmed, manipulated, posted online, and attacked. I know that by speaking up tonight, I will likely result in again being attacked. But silence is often misconstrued as consent and enables the abuse to continue. This needs to stop. Individuals film employees without the employee's consent, often with the intent of posting those videos online for financial gain. That's what this is about. They hurdle insults to create footage that will, that they can edit, alter, and utilize AI. The results do not provide transparency, but rather targeted harassment. These videos cause employees to become the victims of digital mobs. I have received death threats and threats to harm my family. I have been told more than once that we are going to come rape your daughter in front of you. Strangers have vowed to come into the workplace and physically harm me and to kill me. Three weeks ago, an employee came into the back office to advise me that a group of people had arrived and collected in the parking lot all at once. Because we are continuously threatened, continuously receiving phone calls about how we will be killed and harmed, or our families will be harmed. We immediately went into lockdown mode, dialed the police department. I prepared the exit plan that I now have to rehearse in my head on a regular basis because of the extreme harassment this causes. Is this the work environment you want for employees? Someone decided my fear, my safety, and my dignity were less valuable than their views and income. Someone gets to post edited content with complete disregard to the human cost. Regardless, if a person works in public service, no one should be subject to threats, harassment. This is not a minor inconvenience, this is not part of the job. This is a serious threat to the physical and psychological safety of your employees. When employee fails to take action to put policies in place or protections in place, they fail in their fundamental responsibility to make a safe work environment. Protecting employees is not...
Cindy, I interrupt you, your, the three minutes are up. I apologize, but that's what stated at the beginning of the meeting.
Just would like to finish quickly that tonight you have the opportunity to decide who you want to value and who you want to protect before words become violence and before someone pays the ultimate price for simply being present at work.
Brian Paulson, I'm a retired police officer from here in Colbiskill. Cindy, I apologize for any harassment that you may be getting from strangers. However, you did not once indicate these two guys, these two gentlemen, are harassing you at all. They are simply documenting everything that you and I have done on a daily basis. If that was not the case, then proper complaints couldn't be resolved. You remember when I filed a personnel complaint three years ago against the mayor? Never once got a call. Maybe if he was here documenting, I mean, that was in writing. I never once got a call, it was never looked into, and can we get a finalization on who handled that investigation? I mean, that's why we want this, so that people can be held accountable. And Ruth, I commend you for what you said, and Mike, I know you weren't here when that took place, so I'm not putting you down at all, I know, I've worked with you before, and you're always a good guy. But three of you sat up there when I handed you that personnel complaint, and it's on Shopec, but what if he was following up on it? Maybe my rights wouldn't be violated from your harassment, because you know, her handpicked police department, police chief, who she doesn't have money for, but there's three of them standing here today. They don't have money, but when she needs them, you can have three people on the payroll here.
Is this related to the public?
Yes, it talks about why we should have people recording for showing you how to do your job and hold you accountable. Now, if I remember right, we didn't have money for a police department, but now there's three people here, as I was saying. And it's just, like, you can't even answer to my complaint. You know, if they were here, that would have been resolved. But it's not, not a single person. I would recommend that you table this till the new mayor comes in. There is, the public has spoken. The public does not want these kind of actions here in the village. And I came from far away too, just to be here because I still care about this village. This was home to me. But you know what? What, because it wasn't documented by complaint? Instead, I got phone calls from the new police department trying to get me to do interviews to find some kind of erroneous crime that I committed to lock me up in retaliation. That's the type of person that you deal with, okay? Don't let that happen. Change happened with the election. Let the election go forward, and let the new mayor come in and make Colbiskill great again.
Hi, my name is Brittany, and I'm from Otsego County. So I wrote some stuff down. I don't publicly speak, but I just want to say that regardless of tonight's outcome, it's important that everyone in this room understands the reality of the situation and why we're here addressing it in the first place. Simply put, nobody deserves to be threatened, harassed, or slandered online for doing their job that they're hired to do. When a YouTuber or content creator's income depends on clicks, views, and engagement, they'll do whatever they can to shape their content into a narrative that brings them the highest financial return possible. Unfortunately, the employees of the Colbiskill Village Municipal Building have become direct victims of this behavior. Repeated visits from so-called auditors take valuable time away from the work that the employees are expected to complete, work that's funded by taxpayers' dollars. But wasted time isn't even safety, dignity, and basic human decency. Whose job description includes tolerating harassment? And by harassment, I'm not talking about mild criticism. I'm talking about death threats, death threats that have explicit details on how they'd be carried out, sexual harassment, violent sexual threats directed not only at the employees, but also at their family members. And yet, simply because they're labeled public employees, they're expected to remain calm and professional, and while an agitator with a camera who profits from the online engagement and selects their victims, subjects them to the defamation of character and assassination designed to fuel a predetermined narrative. Recent events shouldn't make it, should make it clear that human decency and community respect are not being upheld in the village of Colbiskill. So I ask, when is it acceptable for those targeted victims to stop silently taking moral high ground and start protecting themselves, their reputations, and their families? Do we really have to wait till a threat becomes a reality? Or until an employee's physically harmed, sexually assaulted, until a family member's targeted simply because they're related to the public employee? And if limiting the record insight or limiting the ability to record inside public buildings isn't an option, what is the solution? Because wearing nothing really is not...
I am Rob Cohen, I'm a terrible public speaker, so bear with me. I see a lot of animosity in this room. Some people towards you, you know, it's, I've learned in this last year, it's okay to be passionate, and I don't know anything about this, it's just I'm viewing, I'm seeing both sides, so I just wanted to speak. It's okay to be passionate, but it's not okay to be emotional. So you can still get your point across by, you can, you know, if you feel, like you get a film, whatever. I get filmed all the time, so I live under God, you know, it's, I live my life, it's an open book. But maybe sometimes it's how you say things, it's how you come across, it's how you present your case. If you want to film somebody, do it like an interview. Hey, I'd like to talk to you about this, you know, bring up some subjects. But sometimes the key to take away from this is, a lot of times it's how you say this and not what you say. So, and it shouldn't be, you know, this Republican, Democrat, you see what's going on now. We should be able to agree to disagree, and it shouldn't be a fight, it shouldn't be you're wrong, you know, it's my way, or it's your way, you know, it's, so that's all, just, we're all human, we all screw up, we're all trying to make this world right, and just do the best you can and have an open heart, that's all.
Becky, if I may, it warrants clarification. Dan's not wrong in the sense that this particular case was not appealed to the appellate division. It was decided by Judge Davenport, and what I give you was a 17-page decision issued by Supreme Court upholding, but it was, it was not Dan's particular case that was upheld in the appellate division, but this particular decision does cite Supreme Court that supports the statute, the way it's written.
Nancy Van Dusen. I'm concerned about this because I feel like the village hall and the police department and the parks are actually public areas, and the public should be welcome in those areas. I feel like making them off limits limits what your constituents can, how your constituents can interact with you. I just feel like it's too prohibitive.
So just to be clear, this is about non-public...
So just to be clear, this is about non-public forum areas. So this is not saying that you can't enjoy these places. It's asking that you not utilize the recordings, et cetera. And the original sign actually asked if you would ask permission prior to. So to Rob's point, I think that that is important. Give people the option. So this is not, this is for prohibited activities, unauthorized access, unauthorized photography and recording of village employees and volunteers when they are working, whether it's in the clerk's office, if it's the water superintendent working in the pool pump house or what have you. It's about protecting the employees' rights to not be recorded and then ultimately harassed and potentially abused. I just think that those of you sitting here or watching on Showpeg are not aware of what actually happens, the comments that are actually made. Cindy is a thousand percent right. The emails, the phone calls, it's unnecessary. It's wildly unnecessary, and our employees should not feel that they are unsafe in the workplace ever. It's not acceptable.
So without allowing recording though, you're free to abuse-
Sorry, I'm Anthony Fong. Just, you know, I watch what happened out there. And the problem is, what I feel lately is a lot of public servants forget to public servants. It feels like, honestly, the video, it could have all been avoided by just being nice to the public. That's all, that's all they're asking you to do, is just treat them with respect. Why is that a problem? So the more you're sitting here trying to, why, so you guys can abuse us more of the public and just not have it on tape? That's what it seems like. Like, I don't, just don't know what happens just being nice, you know what I mean? Everywhere you go lately, public servants forget they're public servants. If you don't like the job, you just don't take it. You don't know who's forcing you, especially Mayor. Nobody is forcing you to take these jobs. You don't like it, yes, I don't agree with like the harassment, I'm not saying any of that is okay. But if you watch like other videos, like they have, any of the auditors, it doesn't happen to people that just treat the public with respect and are nice. It doesn't happen to them. Every time you go into the public, I went in there not that long ago, you guys are just rude, rude and disrespectful, and you act like you don't want people there and you don't want to help people. So what do you expect is going to happen? I mean, with everybody, the public, you have hundreds of thousands of people that say, yeah, you're probably going to get a little, you know, harassed a little bit. But if you would have just been nice to people and been, you know, that's what, those offices and stuff are there for the public to come in, what taxpayers pay for, for them to come in there and utilize those spaces. They're not yours. They're not yours to like make your house, you know, you don't live there. That's not, that's, you guys think it's your house and it's not. That's the public's house. So a lot of this just would be avoided. All I'm saying is just treat the public with respect. And a lot of this wouldn't even happen. You know, it doesn't happen to millions of people that get recorded because they are nice to people. And you should see, actually, they get commended for the way they treat the public. So why does it only happen to the people that are rude and disrespectful to people? I just, you know, I mean, might want to look in the mirror, just, that's all I'm saying. Just treat the public with respect, that's all, that's all I say.
Good evening. I am Corinne Canister. I am a Skandary County resident my whole life. I have been in community service my whole life, and I have to say what really offends me is the derogatory statements made to everyone, the swearing, the profanity. Everyone treats everyone with a smile. You walk in a door, you smile. You handle people the way you expect them to be handled to you. I'm sorry, I'm a little motion. But anyway, I just don't like the profanity, I don't like the accusations. This is a public service, yes, but that does not mean that they need to be subject to harassment and to mean statements in emails and videos. This is supposed to be a God-fearing area. We need to treat each other as we want to be treated. And the swearing and the profanity and the accusations specifically to each individual person is wrong. They are doing a job that none of us are doing. We're not up there, they are. And I give them credit, and every public servant, credit for stepping up and doing a job that no one else will do.
Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Mike made a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Second by Howard, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. Does anyone wish to make a motion to approve or not approve, proposed local on number five?
Guys can't do that till executives make a work session legally. Guys can't just pass the law without a work session?
That is a first by Mike. Is there a second?
I'm sorry? I second.
Second by-
I don't know if I can, but do.
Discussion? Roll call vote?
Mike let?
No.
Liz Van Duzen?
No.
Rebecca Stanton Turp?
Yes.
So that's a nay.
Yeah, you guys are- So you made a motion to not approve it. So you're a yea, a yea, a nay.
For the clarification.
Nay. Lance Vitolo?
Yes.
You're a yea, you're a nay or a yea?
Yes.
To not approve?
Correct.
Howard Burke?
A yea to approve.
To approve the bill or not to approve?
To approve the bill.
So you're a nay.
A nay, okay.
So we have three yays and two nays.
So it does not pass. Okay. Seven eight, we have just the time, I'm moving along. Department and consultant reports, Attorney Storm. You guys haven't left any questions?
No.
Kirk Treasure?
Nothing to add.
Opposed, Mike and Ryan?
Yes.
DPW, I didn't see Aaron. Okay, Aaron's absent. Chief Ricky? Do you have anything to add?
No.
Chief Di Martino?
You have it.
I think Mike is working, right?
I'll call over.
Okay, so he's not here, absent, okay. Wastewater Berry? Water Chris?
Can I give a shout out to fire and rescue squad? It seems like they've had an inordinate number of calls lately, and I appreciate, the community appreciates all you guys do, your volunteerism, and thank you and keep up the good work.
Absolutely, yeah. Moving on to old business, we have not heard back from the town highway to the town about the highway MOU. They have no response. I also had something I wanted to just mention for old business. The flood mitigation study that we are undertaking should be finished by the end of December, and that should set us up nicely for future grants. So as far as flood mitigation in the village. We have four grant applications that are in the works, and we won't know where they stand until probably after the first of the year. And they are for water upgrades, sewer upgrades, settles, mountain road, and also brand new drive sidewalk. We have not heard anything from the town in response to the building lease, so I presume they will address that at the next board meeting. Moving on to new business, this was an add-on late. Can I have a motion to approve change order number three for Borderline? And that is actually a decrease in contract of $3,500. First by Mike, second by Howard, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. And then also, we would like to close out, we got the closeout documents from Brendan Becker for the Elm Street project, completing the punch list. So if I can have a motion to close the Elm Street project and return the retainage to Borderline in an amount of $16,497. First by Mike, second by Howard, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. Can I have a motion to declare the RICO copiers? The numbers are there, their specific numbers are listed as surplus and request Toshiba to remove both units. First by Ruth, second by Mike, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. And can I get a motion to approve what engineers to proceed with placing the town of Cobleskill Water District Master Meter Project out there? That's in the 2026 budget. First by Mike, second by Howard, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. Also, in passing the budget that allowed us the $282,000 to do the roof on the firehouse, the second roof on the firehouse, we did the flat roof. To, can I have a motion to award the bid to tighten roofing in the amount of $282,000 as part of the 2026 budget, hopefully in the spring? First by Howard, second by Lance, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. Can I get a motion to transfer $501,572.98 received from bond issued October 16th, 2025 for the Rosenbauer tanker truck from the general fund to the fire apparatus reserve account? First by Mike, second by Howard, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. The next are just recommendations from the village planning board. I will just mention what they are, and we can potentially set a public hearing for comments for your next regularly scheduled board meeting. Let me find them. So they are, one, and this is by reviewing the code, and I understand that there's probably more review to be done, but this is what the planning board came up with, four recommendations. One is removal of student residence references from zoning code. And what that specifically refers to is the Village of Cobleskill Planning Board recommends that the Village Board of Trustees amend the zoning code to remove the definition of student residence from the code, delete any references or restrictions pertaining to student residences in the schedule of uses and other zoning provisions, ensure that all residential uses remain regulated according to dwelling type and zoning district without regard to tenant status as students. That was number one of them. The second one is revision to townhouse definition and schedule of uses. Village of Cobleskill Planning Board recommends that the Village Board of Trustees amend the zoning code to revise the definition of townhouse to align with the New York State Building Code, add a line for townhouses under the residential category in the schedule of uses for all districts where single-family dwellings are permitted, subject to site plan review. Add corresponding bulk standards to townhouses to the table of bulk standards, using the recommended minimums and setbacks consistent with single-family dwelling standards and fire access considerations. The third one is the correction to schedule of uses for two-family dwellings. The Village of Cobleskill Planning Board recommends that the Village Board of Trustees amend the zoning code to revise the definition of townhouse to align with New York State Building Code, add a line. Didn't I, am I rereading the same thing?
Yeah.
I'm sorry about that. Brian, did I maybe misprint something potentially? One heading says correction to schedule of uses for two-family dwellings and another says revision to townhouse definition and schedule of uses.
Yeah, they're both very similar.
Okay. I think I might have something. I apologize to those who are in the audience and those who are watching, but I think that I might have something not correct. But I will get the revisions and get them posted online and have them available at the office. But the title is correction to schedule of uses for two-family dwellings, and the other one was revision to townhouse definition and schedule of uses. And the fourth is the cannabis retail dispensaries. I believe this was done in an error, so the Village of Cobleskill Planning Board hereby recommends that the Village Board of Trustees amend the schedule of uses to correct this inconsistency by changing the use classification cannabis retail dispensaries in the CI District from P to N, therefore bringing the schedule of uses into full alignment with 160-8.26. So the schedule of uses mistakenly lists commercial industrial. That is not what the law states, so we have to make that correction. So the recommendations, I apologize that one needs more clarification, but I'll get that for you. And can I have a motion to hold a public hearing on these for public input for the next regularly scheduled Board of Trustees meeting on December 16th at 7:00 PM?
I make a motion that we set a public hearing at the December meeting to see real comment on the recommendations from the Village Planning Board on the four recommendations.
Second by Mike, all in favor? Opposed? So carried. Okay.
Mayor, if I just may, just, this is a, I know that there are corrections technically, at least that's what everyone-
Well, not all of them.
I know, but some of them, not withstanding that, if any amendment needs to follow Village Law 7-706, so you have to have, and 7-706 will lay out everything you have to do, but there are certain circumstances where you might have to notify adjacent landlords about that public hearing, so you just want to take a look at that. If you have questions along the way.
Brian, did you hear that from the, okay, so you'll take care of that from your office? Awesome, thank you so much. Thank you, Attorney Storm. Okay, the next one is Resolution 16 of 2025 as it relates to the Cobleskill Agricultural Society billing. What we are looking to potentially do is commence billing the Cobleskill Agricultural Society for Water and Sewer on a quarterly basis consistent with the billing procedures and rates applicable to all other service properties within the Village of Cobleskill. For content, we have charged only water and sewer during the period of four days prior to the start of the fair scheduled and two days after. And some years the fair went longer than others, but it was not to exceed two weeks per year. So they have not been billed.
Just to explain this a little bit, the legal law is now, the agricultural society's own- is only billed for water services during the fair, that's used during the fair. The rest of the year, they've been allowed to go for free. Well, for years, that was appropriate because for years, other than the fair, the fairgrounds pretty much sat there closed up for the rest of the year. But now it's gotten so, especially when it's been the better weather, almost every weekend, there's activities going on. There's dog shows, there's horse shows, there's this, there's that, there's all kinds of stuff. And all of this uses water. And so it's really become necessary, they're using a lot more than they used to announce. This is why we're proposing to bill them like we would anybody else, for all they use during the course of the year.
At the full rate?
It's the same rate everybody else pays.
Well, they're going from nothing to full, so it would be a big change for them, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's not an enormous sum of money, but we don't see why they, you know, all the other, you know, everything from the Maple Fest to everything else goes that goes on down there uses water. And we can't, we just don't feel it's right for the taxpayers to provide it to them for free when everybody else has to pay.
Does anyone have any questions or discussion? So to your point, the, it's fairly typical for a user of the fairgrounds, when it's not the fair to pay a fee to utilize it. So it's something that could potentially just be a pass through. But right now, all of the individuals who are utilizing and paying for water and sewer are in fact paying for that bill.
Since there's going to be jumping out, I propose that I make a motion that we postpone this to the next meeting, and then we can all think about it more.
Okay, we have a first by Ruth, a second by Mike.
I do have one question.
Yes.
Did we ever hear back from them?
We did not. We did issue them a letter back in August, asking for them to reach out, that we were proposing a, proposing to charge them, asking them to return correspondence, and we have not. We did that in a manner that would allow them their time, because we know, just like the Village of Cobbleskill, we need time to budget appropriately. So we felt we afforded them that opportunity. We have a first and a second to postpone, to table it until the following meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Can I have a motion to accept the estimate in contract with barrier-free elevator sales and service for labor and materials to modernize existing inclinator, which is actually our elevator, that's the word we're commonly using, in the amount of $105,160. The inclinator was placed out to bid and no bids were received. So I did ask Aaron, I said, we do need to replace this elevator. We have individuals, it's a public facility who need to utilize it. So he did get a quote from the only company, which is barrier-free, who would give him an estimate. We budgeted for it in 2025 for $100,000, that's what we estimated it would be. So the next, if we agree to this, the next portion would be utilizing the additional $5,160 from reserves.
I have some worry about the $5,000 and a 35-year-old piece of equipment. And the invitation to bid asked for direct replacement of inclinator. Inclinator is a company that makes residential elevation devices. I assume it was a residential device, because I think the building was a daycare center beforehand, so it probably didn't need commercial use. In my looking, it seems like replacement elevators are potentially less than $100,000, and I wonder if we shouldn't look wider and pull in TOTUS Elevator and some other companies, have them look at the situation, see what they recommend that we do before we invest $105 on 35-year-old piece of equipment.
Anybody?
So if this gets replaced, does it change anything with codes as far as handicap accessible?
I'll let Brian answer it up.
So if this gets replaced, what does that do for, like, fire code and everything else with the building? Is there anything else going to be, proper spacing and? Because I don't know if you can get a wheelchair in the one I have now, right?
This is looking at codes for the base thing, so it was working, but.
And the inclinator, we're confusing for a second.
So if this gets replaced, or repaired or whatever, does that meet codes, AJ, all that stuff, ADH?
It should, yes.
Can you get a wheelchair in the current one? I've never been in it, so I.
I think it barely qualifies.
We have many residents who utilize that. Unfortunately, the reason that we felt so strongly about its replacement is because it breaks down quite a bit, and it's a tremendous barrier for many of our constituents, both the village and the town. So I personally wouldn't have a problem with reaching out further, but I know Aaron exhausted what he could with replacing what's existing currently.
I'm thinking like EMS-wise, stretcher probably will not fit in it.
No.
Luckily, there's a back door, but it's covered with ice or stone.
Correct.
Because I'm thinking early mornings, we can't really use their elevator, whatever you want for stretcher.
Right, right. I think, to be fair, that that would take quite a bit to, of the, you'd have to reconstruct that whole portion. And again, I think that it's probably going to be, and then that's a very good point, Mike, actually.
So it's really going to follow again.
Yeah, so that's, I see everybody's point, but we failed to get anybody to bid on it. But irregardless, it should be addressed, because we can't continue to have that breakdown. It's difficult to fix, because it's as old as Ruth said it is.
I just wonder if it was, if the bid was lured differently, rather than direct replacement inclinator, whether you might get some response to the bidding process, and if you reach out and get vendors in here to talk to us. Maybe it was, I don't know. But that, that's the way I would approach it before I spend $105.
May I ask you a question?
You may.
What iteration of the bid you thought, do you have a period of time to consider?
I don't have the bid specs in front of me, I couldn't answer that for you. And unfortunately, Aaron from Buildings and Grounds is absent this evening, and he would have that information. And he could expound on what the method was and whom he contacted.
If you had 30 days, it would be a good idea.
The bid was closed September 29.
Yeah, I know, you're negotiating now, so if you hold this bid, it would benefit you to look into it.
But Ruth has a motion on the floor to table it and try and relook at that.
So is it functional now, or is it out of service?
No, currently, it's functioning.
Then I'll second her.
Okay. First by Mike, second, I'm sorry, first by Ruth, second by Mike. All in favor? Opposed? So carried. Okay. So that takes off the next one. Can I have a motion?
It's not relevant at this point.
Yep, yep. Can I have a motion to approve and affirm the warrant of unpaid taxes for 2025? The base amount is $163,896.74, plus $13,207.77 penalties and mailing fees, for a total of $177,104.51, consisting of 96 parcels. First by Lance, second by Howard, all in favor, opposed, so carried. Can I have a motion to approve the hourly pay rate change for Nicole Kane, part-time secretary to the chief of police, for from 18:50 an hour to 20:00 effective 11/24 of 2025?
Again, I have comment on that. This employee's been with us three months. I'm not sure it's a good precedent to give raises after only three months of service. So I would make a motion to disapprove.
Is there a second? So there is no second to disapprove. Is there a motion to approve it?
Yeah, I'd like to motion.
First by Howard, second by Lance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We are going to hold off on the next three until we go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations with Attorney Storm. Can I have a motion to appoint Raymond Layout the Fourth to the position of part-time police officer at $30 an hour, conditional hire pending necessary background check and testing, with a start date to be determined? First by Mike, second by Lance, all in favor, opposed, so carried. Can I get a motion to approve the 2025 budget changes as listed? First by Mike. Second by Lance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Can I get a motion to pay abstract number 1125P in the amount of $189,210.33, as well as abstract number 1125 in the amount of $385,766.45?
Can I just interject?
Yes.
That the abstract 1125 will adjust, because that currently did approve pending approval for the inclinator, so that will actually adjust down $26,290.
Okay.
So just say less that amount.
Okay. Thank you, Cindy. I'm sorry, sorry, was there a motion? First by Lance, second by Mike, all in favor, opposed, so carried. Okay. And in the interest of time, I am going to ask for a motion to go into executive session, so we can button up these.
Can I answer before that happens? Can I ask a question, please?
You can make it a quick question, yes.
Quick question. I contacted the office, I wanted to get on the agenda, some public comment. I was told the agenda's full, but I could speak to public comment on behalf of the fire department, and it got skipped over tonight.
Well, because we have a very long agenda, Heather, so can you make it like two minutes?
I, I mean, I.
We have to conduct our business, we.
I understand that, but to do it justice, it needs longer than two minutes to properly thank the board and our membership. So if I had known that, I would have rearranged my child care for tonight, so.
Well, can you, we can, we have to go into executive session to handle this?
That's fine.
And we're not closing the meeting out, so.
That's fine, I just know sometimes we don't come back after executive session, so I just want to pack.
If I know you're going to be here, we will definitely come back.
Fine.
We have to conduct business. Okay?
That's fine.
Okay. So we are going to remove ourselves to go into executive session. Can I have a motion to go into executive session? First by Lance, second by Mike, all in favor, opposed, so carried.
That's nice, if they remove themselves.
Yeah.
This is where everybody wants to have a.
You're just starting some trouble.
You're just starting some trouble.
You work in fire, right?
I've seen a lot of the fire.
Are you drunk?
Yeah.
This is the truth, though, you know what I mean? Like, I even put that video together to show like four minutes, exactly the same thing, and it's like, not one of those ladies, any of those videos got read.
What's up? You excited to get, you excited? You know, I'm not playing the politics.
No, I understand, thank you.
That was the chief there.
Should I ask her to sneeze mine?
What?
Should I ask her to sneeze mine?
Yeah, they don't like you.
Rebecca left her card.
Yes, no, okay.
I mean, we can head, we can head out, I mean.
People want to talk about.
I mean.
Dude, I don't figure, but I don't do a mess.
Oh, we bet on a shoot to yours, I believe I was sitting there.
I like the car out there.
Yeah?
I wrote Kermit the Frog.
Fool.
No, we're live on the internet.
Are you a local?
Yeah.
Are you still his grandson?
Nobody wants to talk. We'll see if anybody here wants to talk.
Okay.
I would just like to shake the hand of those three board members that both didn't know.
I'll send them to hell.
Huh?
I'll send them to hell.
Wonder how long an executive session is going to go.
This would be wild, they're going to, they're going to.
They're going to milk it?
They're going to, you know.
Not my problem.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I'd like to leave.
Well, they moved back, okay, yeah.
That's a cool meeting down here. Yeah, pretty much.
Four-hour drive.
Yeah. Five for you, four and a half for you. I want to see if any citizens want to talk, they all got something to say, it's like, here, want to say something.
Thanks so much, how are you?
About you, you excited for you have a new boss, Howard, or what?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Excuse me, thank you.
Got to check for contraband, of course, guys, see what we got on the computer. So what do you guys think? That's the board meeting down here. It looks like the law has been shut down till further notice. I don't believe the law will be able to get back on books with the new mayor, therefore, we shut it down, fam. I'll see you guys in the comment section, you guys let me know what you think, and we'll be in the next one, because you know, just because this mayor is out, doesn't mean there's going to not be a next one, because there's enough tyrants to go around. So I'll see you guys in the next one, I got a nice four-hour ride home, and I'll see if any of these people want to talk, maybe off-camera a little bit, too. I'll see you guys in the comment section, I love you all, and congratulations, we all got this law dismissed.